It's five o'clock. The March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting study session is called to order. All of our directors are present. Murray Evans, King Mostert, and Schreiber. Thank you to the staff for being here. You have the agenda before you for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five study session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the March eighteen, twenty twenty-five study session? Seconded by Director King. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed, say no. All right, the agenda is approved. All right, I will turn it over to Superintendent Hoppen now to kind of give us an introduction for tonight.
Okay, thank you. I want to start before I turn it over to Ruth Floyd to launch into our current budget position. Just to provide context around being here tonight, this is our third year of, third year in a row of budget reductions based on forecasts. Those forecasts change as the year goes on, but keep in mind that cycle that we've began to carry out. And just also that our lens for making forecasted reductions circles around two things. One is our strategic plan, which we're two and a half years into. And we're part of, it was a big community effort to arrive at the strategic plan that we know and are promised. And then the other piece being the equity lens. And when I talk about the equity lens, I really think about the unintended consequence. We want to measure everything that we look at as a potential reduction and think about the unintended consequences that those reductions could carry, you know, thinking about the barriers that those present. Look at impacted groups within those, within the potential reductions. And how do we mitigate and monitor based on that? Lastly, around involving others, and this is the first step in that, along with our labor partners in the larger community next as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ruth to start. Thanks, Ruth.
Yes, good evening. My apology for my voice, I've got a little bit of a cold, so hopefully you're able to, I'm able to project enough and you can understand me. We first wanted to go over the budget landscape. Excuse me. And to do that, we need to first, on page two, look at where we are estimating our enrollment will be. And as you know, enrollment is very important in the school district in that it drives our staffing as well as our funding. And so this enrollment projection is for staffing. And then we, I have another one that isn't listed here for funding purposes. Staffing is based on October one FTE. And then funding is based on the annual average. And the annual average is always a bit less than the October one FTE. And so the team used this to allocate using our basic education models, staffing consistent with how we have in the past. And you'll notice that the total is four thousand six hundred and ninety-four FTE, and that is about fourteen higher than prior year October. It is, though, showing a reduction in elementary because we do have that kind of bubble, or not bubble, but that depressed kindergarten, last couple, few years of kindergarten enrollment has been lower, and so that's kind of working its way through the elementary school. And so we are seeing projecting lower enrollment in elementary, about flat in middle, and then a bit higher in high school because there is a bubble kind of moving through, through high school now that as, according to projections.
So just to clarify, for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we are above budget for enrollment, but we've seen continual decreases throughout the year. Is that sort of accounting for this trend in this as well?
Yes, so the side projection that I do for annual average for funding, yes, I anticipate that that decreases compared to the staffing. It's very common for districts to use October one for staffing purposes, and that's what we've been doing here as well.
No, I mean like, is this projected number accounting for the continued decline of this year and then into next year for that projected October one date?
Yes, so what, how we do it is a roll up from October to October. And so there always is a shift in the later months of the year, but then it tends to kind of come back in October.
Okay.
So that, that's what we look at when we do kind of the cohort roll up. We look at where from October to the next October.
So like where historically we've started each October and November?
Yeah, I'm looking at five-year averages and so on, how we, how we retain or lose in the roll up of the grades.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. All right, any other questions about enrollment? Okay, the next page three is looking at the current year. And at the very top of the page, you'll see that it's a very summarized version of where we, we began the current fiscal year on September one, twenty twenty-four, at eight point five million dollars, and where we anticipate ending this current fiscal year on August thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And then you'll see that the percent of revenue on the side there as well. We anticipate total fund balance to be about eight percent at the end of this year. What you may be more interested in, though, is that unassigned because your board policy says that we will have five percent unassigned in total. And you'll see there that we have us, kind of set aside that five percent minimum fund balance, and then we have an additional two point five percent above that estimated at the end of this year. So seven, total of seven point five percent estimated. And then the bottom of the page is just giving a little bit more detail on how that change between eight point five million and seven point one million occurred, or is occurring this year. You'll see that in the middle of the page, there's a twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted expenditures over revenue. So that's the board adopted budget for this year. You adopted a budget that was about one point three million revenues less than expenditures. And then the other items on this list are those things that have, the big picture items that have changed from the time that the budget was adopted. And most of these won't be any surprise. These, we have had increased special education as well as additional safety net revenues that we project that we will have by the end of the year. We generally have to estimate what those safety net revenues are going to be in the spring, almost a year before we know what that dollar amount is going to be. And so this spring, we realized that, yes, we would have some more, some additional safety net revenues in the areas, special education programs. And then same with transportation. We don't get our transportation funding until April of the year in which we're working. And so we, and we got some transportation safety net funding as well, which is good news. And then you'll see under expenditures and other uses, in addition to that board adopted deficit, we had some salary and benefit increases related to collective bargaining agreements. And we have had some savings throughout the course of the year in non-salary, non-salary costs. So that brings us down to the seven point one million that's estimated for the end of this year. Any question about the current fiscal year and how those changes are coming to be?
Yeah, on the reserves. At Wausau, I attended a session on this stuff.
Yes.
And they were talking about the districts that are in trouble like Marysville and what happens to them and all that. But they would like to see a head for reserves. And so as I recall, I mean, eight percent is good, but they'd really like to see higher than that. And so I presume we should hang on to that.
This, people in my position always, you know, would like that extra safety net because a budget is a plan, and it's always good to have some additional safety net in order for those, for those things that you just can't plan for.
Yeah, because we're looking at cutting back. So one reaction would be, well, we don't need that much. Well, from what I heard at Wausau, I think we do. Yeah, so that's.
It seems like a good number to me. What do you think? I mean comparatively.
I think that we have been very, in this district, we have been very good about maintaining our fund balance. You've seen other districts, even in our area, that have not been able to do so. And even though we sometimes plan to spend some of our fund balance, the team just pulls together and does what we can to save throughout the year. And that's what, why we've been able to continually have additional safety net at the end of the year in actuality compared to budget so that we have that flexibility to maybe not go as deep as we would need to do with reductions.
Thank you.
And also, is it normal for the reserve balance to go down within each school year? Like, it looks like it would down one point four.
That, it can. Of course, we'd like to see it not so that you have even more flexibility. But sometimes the reductions that we have to do in order to have no budgeted deficit is, just, would be too, too deep. And when you do have a little bit of a fund balance, it's, you know, it's a benefit to be able to rely on that a little bit so we don't have to go quite as deep as you might otherwise.
I think if we had dipped into the reserves the last four years, we would have been at about eleven percent, as I recall.
At one point, we were at eleven percent. But keep in mind that that is at the height of the COVID money. And so at the same time, we were getting federal dollars, some of our costs were lower. And so that was a temporary bubble that many school districts have.
The insurance money?
Yes.
To not keep operating as if we were going to always have that. That's what tend to, yeah.
Well, and we've made reductions over the past three years. You know, to give an example, our building budgets have been reduced year over year. And so at some point, you can't keep reducing building budgets to still operate with, especially with, you know, this lens in mind.
This district has done the hard work that it needed to do in order to keep, you know, maintain, yeah, maintain where we are, and that's, that's a testament to our district.
I'll say.
And I appreciate that you're keeping the cuts as far away from the kids as possible.
As far away from the classroom as possible.
All right, page four is now looking forward into the following here. And I know that I've spoken about this before, but these are estimates that are constantly changing. We do not have our state, the legislature has not finished. We have until, I believe it's April twenty-seventh, if that's more in there, before they're done. And so we have a governor's budget, but we haven't had the Senate or House budget come out. And generally, it's when the Senate and House budgets come out that we kind of start to see a coalescing and some, some consistent, consistency in what the legislature is thinking. And so all of this is based on estimates and, and, you know, Ruth's, you know, maybe this could happen and maybe that could happen.
Crystal ball, if you will?
Yes. So thank you for understanding that these numbers will change.
Thank you for staying another year.
Another question. Ted Wass, the legislative session, have they talked about legislation that could increase their expenses without any funding being provided for that? Now, there was a whole bunch of stuff that was introduced, but even at that update, nothing was, had happened yet.
Yeah, the bills are still moving.
Things have been happening, bills have been dropping out. Are we tracking what bills are going to maybe pass and what won't, and how that might impact our finances?
Absolutely. It started quite robust, what we thought, you know, some of those bills included quite a, quite a bit of money for K-12 education, and as, you know, it's kind of moved through the process, it's come down and down. And so I do have estimates on where they kind of sit now. So I'm very curious to see the House and Senate budgets, to see if anything is included in there. But, but the state also has a deficit of their own that they have to close. And so we needed to make a plan, assuming there would not be additional use from the state.
But the one priority is education, according to our House.
It's in our state constitution to amply fund, not adequate, amply fund K-12 education.
Good one.
But they don't necessarily do it. I mean, we saw the difference, different categories between expense and what was being sent to the schools. So we, and we had to make up the difference.
A note about that. But the, five years ago, the percent of the state budget for K-12 education was fifty-two point four percent, and it's down to forty-three point one percent.
That's a big reduction.
Of the state budget.
Over twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so this, and you, you know, we've spoken about the structural deficit of the, of the apportionment funding and the K-12 education funding. And that, you know, COVID kind of masked that for a little while, and now we're back to having to make those reductions. All right, page four, twenty-five, twenty-six. This is a kind of walking through where we think the deficit will be. So purely looking at twenty-five, twenty-six revenues and expenditures. And again, in the middle of the page, you'll see that we have to remember that we had a deficit in twenty-four, twenty-five. So we need to roll that forward for one point three eight four estimated deficit from twenty-four, twenty-five rolls forward into twenty-five, twenty-six. And then additional changes are added on top of that. We believe that we will receive additional levy revenue for a slight increase in enrollment as well as the per pupil allocation for our levy is going up for cost of living, at least the additional, the per pupil amount that we get for our levy increases based on cost of living. And so that's about five hundred thousand dollars.
That's local money.
That's local money, yes, it is. And the voters approve a top amount of that for each year. It can't go over that, but we do, we do have anticipated that there would be some inflation every year. And so this takes into consideration that, that amount and provides.
Now, if there's a decrease in assessed evaluations, then how does that impact the levy?
The school district gets the same amount either.
Teeter totter.
Yeah. And the school graphics.
It worked.
It worked, it sucked, yeah.
So we have two maximums, the major. One is the voter-approved amount, we cannot go beyond that. And then the state has a calculation that they do that provides the maximum according to their laws that we can, that we can collect. And so if the state calculation is less than the voter-approved amount, then we get that lesser amount.
And one of the reasons for our assessed valuation going up, hopefully, is in addition to increasing property values, which are not exactly doing that, all the new construction. And so how does that impact us?
You know, that is a calculation that the county does that can just, it can make a small difference or a large difference depending on your own home. And so it's very difficult for us to be able to say that one taxpayer or another may pay more or less because of the value of their home.
But how about the new homes, like the cost of from the high school?
That could bring down the cost for others, yeah, depending on the volume of new construction.
Either way, the limit, the amount that we can collect is capped, it's just how that spread out across the community.
And then the next line is, we had a, as mentioned on the previous page, we had additional funding for safety net. Because it is so far ahead that we have to project that, we wanted to bring that estimated safety net revenue down a bit, projecting forward, just to be a bit more conservative and also for some of the anticipated costs going down. So safety net is a lever that says if costs go up, then safety net could go up. If costs come down, safety net comes down. So if we think costs are coming down a little bit because of, for whatever reason, then we have to bring that safety net revenue down as well. And then down under expenditures, we have anticipated salary and benefit increases, including the, what the state flows through for IPD funding. And as you know, the state does flow through some money, but that's on the positions that they fund as well as the salaries that they fund. And so the district, most districts have a local cost to providing the IPD percentage to every employee. So that's that. And then positions unfilled or hired. So this one is, in twenty-four, twenty-five, we sometimes have unfilled positions and we get a sub that costs less than an actual position. Or we hire a position late. And so in the current year, we had savings on that position because we didn't have to pay for them the whole year. But then in the following year, when you roll that forward, you have to annualize that salary. And so that is. And so that is about $960,000. And then we also have non-salary cost increases. And so those are things like additional, some risk pools. Our insurance costs go up every year. We anticipate having an election possibly next year. We have some technology costs, they go up every year. And software costs, as well as some devices that we need to replenish. So when all of that is said and done, there is, would be an anticipated general fund deficit of 4.1 million next year. And the, because we have that, that fund balance, we're feeling like we can use about 1.4 million of our fund balance to reduce the need to make reductions next year.
We'll still make reductions.
And the reductions that we would need to make is about 2.7 million. That's final number there. Any questions on that page?
That's an unpleasant paper.
I know.
That paper is unpleasant.
And the next one, is it really any better? Because it has the same number on it, unfortunately.
It's not, it's not.
I don't like this one anymore.
Yeah. So page five is a summarized list of where we have brainstormed some reduction ideas. So these are, this is a list of the 2526 preliminary expenditure reductions. It includes some, quite a bit at administration. And this goes into what Ryan was talking about at the, at the beginning. We really wanted to keep reductions as far away from the classroom as we can. But as you know, the, the percent of our budget in administration is very small compared to the other areas of our budget, the certified, classified maintenance, supplies and operating costs. So as much as we, you know, try to keep it away from the classroom, we can't completely go to administration for, for all of the reductions. And so you'll see that administration is about $994,000. This does include some school supplies budget that we hope we can obtain a grant or something for to maintain that.
Is that the entire school supplies budget or this part?
Not the building budget.
Is it the student elementary school writing supplies?
Elementary school. Sorry, that's what I meant, is it that whole?
Yes.
Yes.
So everybody would have to go back to bringing their own supplies at elementary?
We have some contingency plans around that, but we also supply through, through building budget as well.
So, yeah, our hope that there will be other, other ways to bring some of these things back as time goes on and we have more time.
And what's, what's been the trend over recent years for the percentage of budget for administration? Is it, there is some percentage here, but.
It's come, it's come down because every single year, we've had administration on the list of reductions. And as a percent of their share of the budget, it's much higher than the percentage on the other categories of staff.
And then what, how do we compare to other districts?
I don't have that answer right now for you. But in my experience, from just having been at three districts, we're very lean.
I think we cut 8% out of administration this last year.
And this number is about between 9 and 10%. And year over year, that's very difficult to, to stay.
Yeah.
Year one was similar.
Yeah.
All right, a some reduction in non-athletic stipends at the school level. What is that? We don't have the specifics identified yet, but the thought would be that we would perhaps put a dollar limit or a number on perhaps the number of clubs at a school. And then if ASB fund wanted to pick up the difference, you know, to, to add more clubs, then they could.
Also typical in other districts.
Just curious.
Why is it a reduction in non-athletic versus across the board? Athletic and non-athletic? Because if we're using that equity lens, we should be considering both? Or is there rules that say that we have to? I know it's not a, it's, it's not a thing that we all want to talk about, but if we are going to be equitable, we should be talking, talking about activities in athletics equally across the board.
Right. One of the first things that we did was took a look at all of the activities that were filled across the district, both at middle school and high school, and started to look between schools, which, which schools had, had a particular activity and which didn't. And we're evaluating that right now as a potential for leveling between schools. So there's the same opportunity at both schools. So that's, that's the start to that.
Just to maybe piggyback on your question, is a stipend set at a set amount that we pay? Like, like it's just, it's previously decided that this is what we pay for a stipend? Or like per stipend? Or could we say lower the stipend amount to like even that out? So like you have the same number, but maybe they get less?
Right, yeah. Good question. And the stipends are agreed upon in the CBA as far as, as far as the amount.
What about the amount of people or staff that are included in that? Because I know like if you're talking about a larger program, there seems to be a lot more paid stipends versus just volunteer parent opportunity.
That is not, there's not a mandatory number per se. For that, it's allocated. So that's.
Something to be considered.
Something to be considered, particularly between schools.
So you could just say that would be a potential leveling of stipends just in general? It wouldn't have to specifically be non-athletic stipends?
Correct, yeah.
You could just say we're going to set a number of stipends? And figure out what that is?
Yes.
Well, just the stipends, non-athletic stipends include, for instance, I remember when we were going over payroll at one point, I was asking, what's that? And that was for like basically a creating a contract over a certain class size? Then to get a certain amount extra, would that be considered a second?
That's not, that's not a disbucket.
Okay.
That's workload relief that's negotiated in our collective bargaining agreement.
And then what non-athletic stipends do we have, for instance?
After-school clubs and.
Oh, okay. And then for the athletic stipends, for the coaches and.
They're the coaches.
Correct. And most of them are doctors? Like for instance, a bunch of football coaches, most of those, like part-time just get a stipend? Or what, or athletic, athletic or a teacher?
There's a number of different ways that that happens. Some coaches have a full stipend. Some coaches split the stipend out between several coaches. And then we have volunteer coaches as well.
And are we considering, I know in the past where, like at the middle school level, in order to still be able to provide an opportunity, there had been a joint effort between both middle schools to provide one team and.
That's still occurring.
Okay.
Yeah. Ruston's an example of that.
All right.
House country.
House country.
So they're a little attractive, right?
Yes.
All right, and then under the human resources heading there, we have classified positions, days, hours and other reductions. So we have some additional flexibility there as far as it may not be positions. It may be, you know, hour, just hours and other, other reductions there. And then up to eight certified positions, ETE.
Are those teachers?
And how many, how many of those will be due to voluntary retirement or voluntary departures? And how many do we have the notices to?
We're still getting, you know, the attrition definitely will have an impact. And we just don't have all that information yet.
And what's our deadline for, what's the deadline for notices?
August 31st.
Oh, I thought it was something in the spring, like preliminary.
If we're going to.
Transfers is April.
And, and, right, and if there's a reduction in force, employees need to be notified by law by May 15th.
And we're, there is no face doing, needing to do that? Yeah, so it's looking, it's looking like we won't have.
That would be what this.
I think they don't know because we don't know how many people have, are planning to retire or.
This says, there could be up to eight.
Yeah. I recall that there was some other context, there was a just in case notices were set out. And then usually it didn't happen.
That frequently happens because the notice occurs in the spring and we may not be notified on a resignation or a leave or something like that until June or July or.
Has that happened with us in the past with our district?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Last year, we had a potential reduction in force that we sent out letters and we were able to, between all of the resignations and the people leaving, we didn't actually have to reduce anybody involuntarily. So it is what I, what I remember happened, right?
And I wonder if we might have lost some people in the, in the process that they get the notice, they go find another job and then we didn't, didn't leave. We could have kept them.
It's a possibility. That's why, we do encourage people to, you know, notify us as early as their, you know, circumstances and will allow for that reason. All right, and then we also can realize, realize how we fund certain costs. And that is a savings of $76,000. And so the total of all that is our definite, our estimated reductions amount, 2.7 million. And these are very preliminary numbers. You know, we're always looking for other ways to, to make the reductions that are needed. And as soon as the legislature comes, comes through, hopefully there will be something in there for K-12 education that'll reduce this number as well. Do you have anything to add on that?
No, I'm, just want to talk about, you know, the potential, you know, the overview of the required reductions. So the potential for us to keep working between now and the next meeting, which is April 15th, and the potential for there to be a reduced educational plan at that, on that agenda. So I wanted to make sure that that was, that was out right now. With that, I just want to reaffirm what's number three on the agenda, and that's around how we have gone through, how we've worked through this reduction process. It doesn't differ significantly from years past, but it does definitely align with what I talked about at the beginning of the meeting. We, you probably saw through this that the attempt to keep this as far away from students as possible is the goal. And looking at what the, what the impact of the student is. Of course, looking at the equity lens and just pointing to the bottom, which Evan will talk about in just a moment, how we involve others or make others aware about the position and the nature in which those reductions have happened. So that is, that is the lens in which all of this work has been ongoing over the last several weeks as it has in the past. One of the important things that, that we've talked about before is how the community and stakeholders are also aware of what the ramifications are and the potential for the reductions, how that impacts the district. And Evan, I want, I'd like Evan to talk about the plan for communicating that briefly, to be mindful of timing. The last two pages that I'd like to make sure we get to.
Yeah. So two years ago, we went through this process for the, kind of the first time in a couple of years. And so people weren't quite familiar with the budget reduction process. We asked people what they wanted to know, make them kind of answer some of the questions. Those questions kind of helped us build a seven-week-long messaging campaign where each week we kind of started with some stuff they want to know. And each week built on each other. We had good feedback. People sensed that they learned about the process and kind of understood where we're coming from. Last year, we had reductions, but they weren't as severe as the previous year. And so we did a two-week-long messaging campaign. This week, this, this year, I've got a kind of a three-week messaging plan where we can kind of tell people kind of where we're at now, where, kind of what's next, and kind of answering some of the common questions that are out there for people. I paired them with graphics, I kind of detailed some of the questions, kind of our gap that we're trying to fill and how we're funded, how we relate to other districts around our area and across the state, and kind of where our expenses and revenues come from. So people are armed with that information. Then they can kind of come to their own conclusions and have questions and, and reach out. And they're more informed. Because as you know, when people don't have the information, they can kind of invent their own.
And make it up.
And then you're kind of combating that as we're trying to deal with the budget deficit. So that's kind of the tentative quick plan.
And how's trending social media affecting this?
Uh, yeah. So again, when people don't have the information and they are left in a vacuum, they kind of reach out and kind of fill it. And so we're there to kind of help fill them with some of the facts. We can reduce some of the misinformation that's out there on social media. So part of the messaging campaign is the, we, we hit out with all of our families on the community via our email newsletters. We'll hit social media and we'll hit our newsletters and all point, our websites and all point back to kind of the same message each week.
Thanks, Evan.
Yeah.
Are there questions about the overview of the budget position before we switch to the topic?
I imagine that's going to be part of that whole state of the schools messaging that we're going out and sort of driving the campaign for?
It's a component of, of it.
Like built in, right?
It is a built-in component of, under the heading of what's trending.
Okay, perfect.
So then we felt that we could have a quick conversation about potential levy, capital levy. And we, the first page, let's see, seven, is potential election dates over the next couple of years. If we chose to run a capital levy on, in 2026, February date would need to have a resolution filed by December 12th, which means that adoption of a resolution by the board would need to happen this October, late October or early November of this year for our February election date. And you can see the other dates there as well.
Root to frame this a little bit, CFAC, which Director Evans and Director King were at, went through a brief process around, you know, what does it look like for a potential capital levy? And what is the kind of appetite right now in the community for, for a levy in and of itself? And the feedback that we got in the small but mighty group was that we need to know what projects would be put forward on a levy, what components would be in the levy. And so that work is ongoing. That work takes some time to generate at the building level, at the district level, and then to get accurate costs to be able to put on a ballot. So, so the reason that we wanted to have this discussion this early is to be able to do that work so that if, if the board decided that, that wanted to go out for a levy, that, that work could already be done.
Uh, just to refresh, so just in case everybody doesn't know, anytime we have anything on a ballot, the school district pays a portion of that ballot, right? So whether it's a director that's up for election, or we put a levy or a bond or anything on there, we pay our portion of that ballot. And it's, we are the only thing on that ballot. We pay the whole expense of that ballot, unfortunately. So just to clarify, we have two directors that are up for election November 2025. We have nobody that's up for election November 2026 though, right? So that would be, if that were to say our target, that would be the only thing that we have on there. So it wouldn't necessarily save us any money if we picked whatever date in November, it would just maybe be we would pay a larger or smaller percentage of the ballot, depending on what else was on it.
It, it would, it would be that, that's right. One of the reasons that February has kind of highlighted is that, that cycle that between our EPMO and, you know, potential capital projects and infrastructure, safety levy. And so that's, that's part of that. But, but that's a great point, it's not free to run a levy.
And does it save a lot of money if we are piggybacking on other things and, and so, but do we need to go solo? Because the percentage of the voters at those elections will vote for our things?
There's definitely statistics around, you know, approval and not, it, there is, the, the cost is lower if we are on the ballot with other measures.
The more things that are on there, the, the smaller our percentage that we go with. The fewer things, the more the other.
All right. And then the last page of your packet is a very early projection of where, using projected assessed value increases of three percent. Where our current combined tax rate would be in twenty twenty-seven. We would be anticipated to have an, a bit of an increase, a very small increase in tax rate. And so that's before we would add any capital, capital levy into that. You will notice though, that in twenty twenty-eight, there is a decrease in the overall tax rate due to some of our bond falling off. So that a portion of the bonds would be paid off. That brings the tax rate down, leaving room for something, another, a capital levy or something else.
So remind me, just so that I make sure I understand, so say we decided that this is what we were doing. And we decided for funsies that we were running the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, or sorry, the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six election. When would be the first?
Collection?
Collection for that, just to, so I understand.
Spring of twenty twenty-seven.
Spring of twenty twenty-seven. Got it. So that would, okay.
For the February, like a February tenth, twenty twenty-six?
Either February tenth or April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, we would start receiving collections in twenty twenty-seven, spring.
And if you win the August or November, it would be same, the same?
Yeah, anytime in twenty twenty-six, we start collecting in spring because we can get, I believe November is in time to get its certified. I'd have to check on November.
Okay.
But I, at least February, April and August is enough time to get it certified for collections in twenty twenty-seven.
What's the time sequence between property values changing and it affecting the assessed value? And then that impacting us, it takes a while, doesn't it?
It's at least a year lag.
Yeah, okay. And so, cause it, well, it has been going down some, I think. So how's, where are we in terms of that?
Yeah, so you'll see on the last page that twenty twenty-four was certified. And it was four point eight three increase in property values. And we'll, we would see that, that in the twenty-five collections. And so it's just a rolling, rolling year. And then it's anticipated to go down this year to three point eight percent and then again, three percent. And going out any further than that, it's, you know, it's just incorrect.
Yeah, what's that timber column?
Timber. The timber assessed value, it doesn't affect our district very much. It's more for districts that have a lot more timber than ours does. And then there's, yeah, then there's state timber as well as federal timber taxes that goes through as well.
One, one thing to raise is maybe why both of these put well together is that in the absence of our expired capital projects and technology levy two years ago. Those items have been absorbed by the general fund. So it is compounding what we're seeing right now in the reductions that we need to make. Because we still have to maintain technology and provide, you know, provide technology. We still have maintenance to do, capital maintenance to do in the district. And so that, that, absence of that capital levy that we had for, you know, over thirteen years is, is being seen now in our general fund. And, and the model that has been used in the past to have a cycle between the elections of the EPNO and the capital, capital levy has worked, has worked well in the past and just something that maybe need to explore. Is there any, is there any questions for?
Well, just in negative twenty-seven, is that what, we're getting that much less than we got last year or?
Um, I'm not quite sure about that. It must be a change in, because there's refunds and so on. And so sometimes they could, I don't know, are they taking back the, the timber excise tax?
Probably.
But like I said, it, for our district, it's very small, so it wouldn't have much of an impact.
I think there was a drastic cut in the funding federal government in the timber, in previous year. That was a, that was a big to do.
There were, yeah, some, some surrounding districts that got timber, timber funds.
Yeah, it was a big deal. Yeah. I think they had it. I'm pretty sure it was the federal government that, that cut that. It was the federal timber money that dropped pretty dramatically.
Yeah, so it's very helpful for some districts.
I remember there was a couple on the peninsula that were very up.
Any other questions? Thanks, thanks Ruth for, during this.
We're almost done, I promise.
Thank you, Evan and Ruth.
Thank you.
Director, there being no further dismus then, the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five study session is adjourned.
We're meeting at six o'clock. I'm now called to order the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five school board meeting. The Stanley Comeno School District Board of Directors. All five of our directors are here. Director Evans, Director Murray, Director Foster, Director King, Director Schreiber, Public Security Officer, our student representatives here this evening, Luke and Elizabeth. Today we're offering two opportunities for the public to comment. Comments specific to the consent agenda will be allowed prior to vote on those items. Citizens who have submitted a request to speak during the public comment section of the agenda will be called upon to make their comments at that time, which is near the end of the meeting. Would you please join me in the closing?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the agenda before you for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular school board meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular school board meeting as written?
Uh huh.
Seconded.
Moved by Director Evans, seconded by Director King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That passes unanimously. The board has had the opportunity to review the March fourth, twenty twenty five regular board meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the March fourth, twenty twenty five regular board meeting?
So moved.
Led by Director Murray and seconded by Director King. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That passes unanimously. It is time for our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I will start the superintendent's report this evening with donations which will be ready in our student representatives, Elizabeth and Luke. Thank you.
Our first donation is one thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy cents from the Skagit Symphony to cover the transportation costs of the Stanley Comeno School District Elementary School fifth grade field trips to the McEntire Performing Arts Center in Mount Vernon, Washington.
A donation of medical equipment and supplies to support special services from William K. Adams valued at eight hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents.
Thank you. Thanks to the Skagit Symphony and also to a longtime former employee, K. Adams for the donations this evening. I'm happy that we will be returning the Shining Star Award as one of our ways to celebrate how we keep students at the center of the work that we do and we celebrate them. These awards recognize students who are shining examples in the schools in which they attend. Tonight, we'll actually recognize four different students with the Shining Star Award. And first, I'd like to call up Principal Sheree Almonte, Assistant Principal Chrissy Ocklin from Port Susan for their Shining Star.
Hi, everyone. I'll wait till this. There we go. Kayden, will you come up and do this? All right. Like I explained to you and your mom on the phone, our staff nominates students and then, and it was a landslide, Kayden, it was obvious that he is our Shining Star. I have a few things that our staff wrote about Kayden that I'd like to share with you. Kayden is always encouraging. He helps me and other students. Kayden can work with anyone. He is a positive, or he is positive and kind. He goes out of his way to say hello during the day. Kayden is a student who works hard each and every day. Even during his absences, he remains committed to staying on top of his academic responsibilities. Kayden is so deserving of our Shining Star Award. He is a hardworking student and a great friend to others, always willing to offer a hand or a warm smile. Kayden is incredibly resilient and is a student that never gives up. He always has a positive attitude, even when faced with some difficult challenges, and is a true inspiration to anyone that knows him. Way to go, Kayden. You're gonna read the other children.
All right. Kayden is an excellent student who always works hard in class and outside it to complete his assignments. He's also very kind in his classmates and is always willing to lend a helping hand. The biggest thing for me would be Kayden's unshakable optimism. Every single day he comes to school, he has a smile on his face and a great attitude. And that we can see that smile right now. Kayden is an awesome student and an even better classmate and a friend to his peers. He is an attentive, responsible student that positively contributes to our class. He asks great questions and truly wants to learn. Kayden is a caring, kind, and respectful kid that always smiles. I appreciate his optimism and optimism.
Everybody, when you come in, you make it a better place. So thank you. Thank you for what we do.
Kayden, we've got a couple of things that we want to make sure we give you and a picture with the board for sure, but is there anyone that you brought this evening that you want to introduce?
I brought my mom, my first grade teacher, Mrs. Berry, my auntie Lisa, my grandma and grandpa, and my stepdad Todd.
All right. We got this beautiful certificate, Shining Star Certificate of Achievement to you. Looks really good on your refrigerator. And yeah, board, congratulations.
Thank you.
We've got some gifts for you here. Some goodies.
Whatever you want, Kayden. Take a good one. Solid choice right there. Get a fun center. Everyone else gather around. You might have to turn your shoulders and squeeze in a little bit of that. And if there's more, come on. Oh yeah, we gotta squeeze in over one. Ryan, get over here. There we go. You there? You take ya. Go tell him. All right, look at it. All right, one, two, three. Perfect.
Congratulations.
This is the best part of the day by no way. Next, I'd like to welcome the podium principal, Todd Klunt, for the Church Creek Campus Shining Stars.
Oh, they want me to announce you. I'm probably going to be the voice of Lincoln Hill High School, Lincoln Academy, Mr. C. Marcus?
He's over there.
You all the way in the back? All right. You get to come in the middle. All right, Marcus Woods. Mr. C. has got some words.
I have to prepare remarks. Don't take up too much time. I'm happy to introduce everyone to Marcus Woods tonight to receive Shining Star Award for Lincoln Hill High School. Marcus started his personal journey with us at Lincoln Academy during COVID and has overcome numerous personal challenges in every aspect of his life to put himself in a position to earn his diploma in a few months. And certainly, he's been related to external factors that were outside of his control, but I am most proud of Marcus for how he challenges himself every day and sets an example of perseverance. That's one of our three Ps, pride, perseverance, progress. He sets an example for everyone, including me. He is an accomplished illustrator. As with anyone who excels at their craft, he consistently challenges himself to improve his technique, develop a distinctive style through experimentation and improvisation. His art brings joy to others. Every day through meditation and study and practice, he's learned to disengage from the noise around him and focus on putting himself into a state of mind that will help him be successful with his tasks and his personal interactions that day. His calm demeanor brings peace to others. His greatest strength, sorry, Glenn. His greatest strength is empathy. Marcus recognizes that we all struggle with something and no effort to improve oneself is ever wasted. He can be supportive to a fault, placing the wellness of others before his own. And sometimes, we remind him that we must stand so that we might help to lift someone else. His actions, unfailingly, reflect kindness toward others. We all deserve joy. We all deserve peace. We all deserve kindness. We all deserve to know someone like Marcus. And I worry that sometimes he doesn't believe that about himself. So Marcus has found, I quote, "One of your favorite books from our English class, 'We accept the love we think we deserve.'" I hope you believe that you deserve the love from everyone on the Lincoln Hill staff these past five years. We give you up for this recognition of you tonight. You make us all proud. You're infinite. Congratulations.
That's my father. Those are my brothers, my sister, and my mom.
I pick a spot. Marcus, you want to put the star up?
This is pretty light. Put your star on the wall.
Right on. Yes. All right. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Oh, Mr. C. Evans.
I'm fine. Hey, everybody. This is Charlie Fredericksvilles. So, you know, Lincoln, Lincoln can be a unique place because it's a small school. And so somebody like, you know, Marcus, who you just saw become and maybe be here for five years, I don't know how long Charlie will be with us. Charlie just came as an eighth grader, but when it was revealed that we were doing this award again, it was pretty unanimous. It was unanimous. Everybody put Charlie's name out there because it's hard to go to a new place and try to figure out how you fit in. And that's kind of what middle school is anyway, but to switch schools and to try to figure that out with a bunch of new people in a smaller environment with a bunch of high school students around can be really difficult. But Charlie's a cool kid. She's got style for days and she has a great way about herself that engages everybody. And she's developed into a leader. She's a classroom representative for Lincoln Academy, for the ASB Student Council, which is, that's a rare thing to be able to sit in those student council meetings with high school students and kind of see how that operates. And hopefully, at some point, maybe continue that. But we're really proud of Charlie. We're grateful to have her at Lincoln Academy and we hope to continue to see her for years to come and develop the relationship with her. So congratulations, Charlie. This is Charlie.
I brought my mother, my grandma, and my sister.
All right. Just what everybody wanted, a certificate of achievement for your refrigerator at home. Your mom will want it. Give you too many things.
No one else? All right. You gotta squeeze in. There you go. One, two, three. Good.
Congratulations.
Monica McDaniel's gonna join us up here. I'm still here. You should take your head and go. Maximus?
How did you get out all this?
I don't know how I called them. Years of experience. Smot all the way over.
All right. First, I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to recognize our Shining Stars tonight. It really is the best part of the night and we should know because we're on again later. The staff at Saratoga School came together and talked about who we would nominate for this, and it was everybody, everybody chose Max. And so we put together some thoughts and so I did write them down. So allow me to speak here. Okay, it's a great pleasure that I introduce Max as this year's recipient of the Shining Star Award. Over the past three years, we've had the privilege of watching Max grow into a thoughtful, hardworking, and positive student. He's always easygoing, willing to collaborate with anyone, and brings an unwavering positive attitude to every task. Max is a student who never hesitates to take on challenges, even those he finds difficult. Whether he's struggling with a task or helping others, he approaches everything with a smile and a determination to succeed. Max's kindness and willingness to help his peers create a supportive and encouraging environment in the classroom. He has a unique ability to lead by example, whether it's offering assistance to others, encouraging participation, or guiding his classmates through activities. His dedication to improving his reading and writing skills despite challenges has been inspiring to witness. Max works hard and isn't afraid to ask for help when he needs it. This demonstrates maturity and self-awareness. The success would not be possible without the dedication of Max's family. They have been a constant source of support, guidance, and advocacy. Their commitment to his learning and growth has made all the difference, and they deserve to be recognized for the hard work and love that they pour into him and his education. Max has truly shown this year, not only through his hard work, but through the leadership and compassion he shows to everyone around him. It's been a joy watching him grow, and I'm proud to honor both Max and his family for their dedication, positivity, and the light that they bring to his educational journey.
I'd like to introduce Ms. McDaniel, my brother, my mom, and my dad.
Thanks to your dad.
Who's that? Your grandma. We're gonna give you your star here.
Here you be. Goodies, congratulations.
Stand by your star there.
All right.
All right. We got to stay on this side before I've instructed the floor.
Yeah. All right. So all you five scooch this way. There you go. I love the scooch. Good. All right, ready? One, two. All right. You got one?
Yeah, I'm good.
Well, that is always the best part of our meeting. And congratulations and thank you to the families for all the work you do. We have some more business to conclude, but for those of you that came to see our Shining Stars... So they're able to access and show that they are progressing towards standard or are making progress where they're at with every single content, or every single standard that they have taught so far. So super excited about that. Science, they are working to pull evidence and then explain their thinking. And so when we talk about our science and history departments, it really does support math and E L A. So our science, being able to take evidence, pull it, and then explain their thinking, it really will help our math scores increase, and it has helped them be more successful in the assessments that our math department is doing. So it really does pull it together.
Yep. And so that connects us back to our history. And so they are also using that eighth's strategy that our language arts teachers uses, but then they also have like STEMS, like how to start your paragraphs, how to incorporate their evidence, how to layer that evidence, and what that looks like. And so really building their writing skills up as they progress.
And even our health computers and band, they're getting involved. And so they're having them track their progress, talking about how they're doing, setting goals, so, setting goals based on their data, how are they going to progress? And so we have every single staff member, a part of our AAP, and all working towards making growth and seeing student achievement throughout the year. So for 24, 25 leveled assessments are being administered and include smarter balanced assessment-type questions, and our progress monitoring has shown positive growth trends for students. This information provides our teachers with the information to continually move all students towards grade-level standards. We spend our PDWs bringing work samples, talking about our work, seeing where we need to go, where the struggles are. Our schedule is set up for common planning, and so it's really been a collaborative process to support one another this year. Any questions?
Are these kids getting grades, A, B, C, D, or?
Yep.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the work that you've been doing at Lincoln School. As a parent who had a child who had issues in mathematics, having someone at the helm who understands the challenges and is able to probably break things down in a way that all students are able to access is impressive.
I actually really think, like, one of the things that I appreciate about your presentation is how we always focus on math, literacy, but you really built on how all of the other classes support those same goals and the same test scores. And so it is a whole school effort, and I genuinely appreciate the way that's sort of outlined and definitely highlighted here. So thank you for that.
I don't know if you guys already went over this, but besides the SBA, what other testing programs do you use for collecting data?
Yeah, so we have the H M H for the, for English is kind of our other big one that we use.
Okay, thank you.
And I continue to hear great things about your music program there. I guess a lot of kids are coming for everything else. So thank you. Awesome. Thanks for the report tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate the student samples that are evidence in the slides as well. So thanks for the great work you're doing. Lastly, Principal Todd Clunt and Lead Teacher Monica McDaniel are going to present the Alternative Learning Experience Report, which is required annually by Policy 2055. Our alternative or choice programs, our schools, are an essential part of our district. And about 6% of our students in the district opt for one of the programs that we talked about tonight. That's the, what we call A L E, Alternative Learning Experiences, or Choice Programs.
Hello, everyone. I guess I have to talk. We're, we're back for our school report later on, probably, I think, around May is our school report. But we're going to talk A L E tonight. Oh, I've never actually used this. Is it just the? No? Yeah, why don't you? There you go. All right. As you can see, our district, from the pictures, you'll see a lot of pictures today throughout our schools. So it really is empowering our students' development. These are our four schools, but we're only going to talk about a portion of what we have on campus. You've all been to our campus, beautiful campus, the most beautiful alternative experience in the state of Washington. But our A L E is really going to focus on Lincoln Hill High School and the alternative A L E experience here, and then Saratoga School is what we're going to talk about.
Okay, before we get too far in, I just want to give a quick definition of what A L E is, because unless you're in the A L E world, you may not know exactly what it is. So it stands for Alternative Learning Experience. And really, the biggest piece of that is that all our part of students' education is outside of a traditional classroom setting. So it's a public school that's still subject to the rules and regulations governing, governing, governing public schools, overseen by a certified teacher. And each of our students has an individual written student learning plan, unique to their In our programs, we support the overall goals of academic achievement. So we do focus on standards and grade-level expectations. We provide learning options for students, offer high-quality courses and materials, and provide alternative, an alternative to a traditional route, and keep students engaged with schooling and on path to graduation.
Sorry, we recounted these slides just to make sure you weren't supposed to speak. I will tell you what Monica said to diverge a little bit is, I would like to personally thank her for and a lot of the staff at Lincoln. I spent my first 30 years in traditional schools and moving to the alternative world for, well, not even my last year, is, has been quite the experience in compliance and the work that they do, not only to provide the experience for kids, and many, many kids in this district, but do it the right way and comply with what the state requires. It's an amazing building, and so, and beautiful building, as you can see there again. So we have two teachers that provide, we actually started the year at .6, with 42 students in our remote program. We increased by another set of students, each .1 is seven students that we provide that to. And the remote program really ebbs and flows with students as they move on track to graduate. And typically, we favor seniors, obviously, and juniors that are trying to maintain being on track to graduate.
And over at the Lincoln Hill side, like Todd mentioned, those are mainly juniors and seniors, and those are taking, they're taking remote courses, so they're checking in with an instructor once a week. Moving over to the Saratoga side, we're a parent partnership program, and I would like to just acknowledge and recognize that we've been in the district for 20 years. This is our 20-year anniversary. Many people in the district probably didn't know we existed until 2020. That wasn't even here. We really grew then. I have been fortunate to be a part of the program for the last 13 years. So we have a total of six teachers on staff, which is equivalent to 4.9 F T E, so not everybody is a full-time teacher. And yeah, that's our staffing. And just a little visual here on how things operate in an alternative program, like a parent partnership program. So this is looking at the Saratoga side. Every new enrollment goes through a questionnaire, kind of like an application process, because we do want our families to know what our, what their commitment level is and the requirements. It's, I kind of joke around that we're kind of bringing on new teachers with every parent that is part of our program. So there's a little bit of an interview process there. It is a choice program. So we go over the choice, the program requirements, and then talk about their specific family and student needs, and how we might fit that for them. Then we go into an individualized curriculum meeting, and we look at the students' strengths and challenges, the parents' strengths and challenges, what they can teach, what they want more support in. We look at the students' learning style, if an online course might be better for them or a textbook. And then how much parent-teacher support they're looking for. So that's the first part of our enrollment process. And then the big, kind of mushy piece over there is where all the learning happens. So our students are learning at home, mostly primarily, with the parent as a primary instructor. They attend once a week onsite enrichment classes with our wonderful teachers, a lot of them are here today. Each week for that meeting, they have a weekly review. So we're going over what they've completed at home, if some of their work samples, we're documenting that, that's part of our compliance and requirements for the state. And our monthly progress, we don't give traditional grades in our K through eight program. We have, each of our students has a written student learning plan, and so their progress is determined by how they're meeting their goals for each month. We then, throughout the year, have various forms of assessment data that we collect. So we do MAP assessment, which is measures academic progress. We do that at the beginning, middle, and end, and we share those results with families right away. So those are, we don't have to wait for the following school year to get those results. We have iExcel that we use with our families, and we have diagnostic tests that we use with them. Because our families are doing different curriculum, it's really important for us to have some common benchmarks that we can look at together. There's also the classroom-based and home-based assessments that are part of the curriculum. And of course, our state smarter balanced assessments, our students participate in that as well. And then just as in any learning environment, we monitor and adjust. So we can provide supplemental materials, create an individual skill plan in iExcel, create progress monitoring if needed, and create intervention plans if our students are not making adequate monthly progress. We, it's required that we actually set up a plan with them and see if we can make that happen. Yeah, so some of our, just for this year, some of our numbers, in October, our head count for students was 222. We usually talk in the, in the terms of head count, even though we do have some part-time students, because each one of those students really is, is, is an individual student that we work with. So 222 students in October. We've kept that pretty steady average, about 223 throughout the months, and are around that right now. And with our student, or student-to-teacher ratio, it's about a little over 45 to one right now.
So you'll notice, remember, this is just our remote program, and you'll see, in February, we actually added a .1. So we're at 49 students now, and consistent. And you can just ask standardized school, they're constantly wanting to have kids enter the remote program, and we just don't have openings. So we've got a lot of kids that are really getting after it and entering credits.
I'll go ahead and go over the written student learning plans. As I mentioned, each of our students has a written student learning plan that's developed by the student and the teacher. Over at Lincoln's side, on the Saratoga side, we are also in collaboration with the parent. That's part of that. They're based on, on the Lincoln's side, based on transcript evaluation, their graduation plan, the number of credits that they need to meet the graduation requirements. On our, our side, our high schoolers, we do have ninth and 10th graders. That would be the same for them. But our K8 students, we're looking at, they're based on their grade level and their education plan. Lincoln Hill High School is also working on High School Beyond Plan, and all of the learning plans have a final approval by the certified teacher.
I can do this. Yeah, thanks. You're going to be proud of me. The weekly check-ins, really, they want to be face-to-face. They can be yoga meets, but the state really requires that, that weekly check-in. The, at Saratoga, the onsite enrichment and those core classes are there once a week. Many of you have probably been to the school, Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, or Fridays, when students are there and they enjoy being on campus. The monthly progress review, did you want to do that?
Sure. You did a good job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
The monthly progress review, as we talked about before, learning progress reviewed monthly by the certified teacher, and that's based on the students' individual goal areas in each of the academic subjects. The schedules can be accelerated, maintained, or modified to promote success. So we have students working above grade level, we have students working at grade level, we have students still working to catch up and fill some holes that they might have had previously. So our students are learning at home mostly primarily, with the parent as a primary instructor. They attend once a week onsite enrichment classes with our wonderful teachers, a lot of them are here today. Each week for that meeting, they have a weekly review, so we're going over what they've completed at home, if some of their work samples. We're documenting that, that's part of our compliance and requirements for the state. And our monthly progress, we don't give traditional grades in our K-8 program. We have, each of our students has a written student learning plan, and so their progress is determined by how they're meeting their goals for each month. We then, throughout the year, have various forms of assessment data that we collect. So we, we do MAP assessment, which is measures academic progress. We do that at the beginning, middle, and end, and we share those results with families right away. So those are, we don't have to wait for the following school year to get those results. We have iExcel that we use with our families, and we have diagnostic tests that we use with them. Because our families are doing different curriculum, it's really important for us to have some common benchmarks that we can look at together. There's also the classroom-based and home-based assessments that are part of the curriculum, and of course, our state smarter balanced assessments, our students participate in that as well. And then, just as in any learning environment, we monitor and adjust. So we can provide supplemental materials, create an individual skill plan in iExcel, create progress monitoring if needed, and create intervention plans if our students are not making adequate monthly progress. We, it's required that we actually set up a plan with them and see if we can make that happen. Yeah, so some of our, just for this year, some of our numbers, in October, our head count for students was 222. We, we usually talk in the, in the terms of head count, even though we do have some part-time students, because each one of those students really is, is, is an individual student that we work with. So 222 students in October, we've kept that pretty steady average, about 223 throughout the months, and are around that right now. And with our student, or student-to-teacher ratio, it's about a little over 45 to 1 right now.
So you'll notice, remember, this is just our remote program, and you'll see in February, we actually added a .1, so we're at 49 students now, and consistent. And you can just ask Stonewall High School, they're constantly wanting to have kids enter the remote program, and we just don't have openings. So we've got a lot of kids that are really getting after it and entering credits.
I'll go ahead and go over the written student learning plans. As I mentioned, each of our students has a written student learning plan that's developed by the student and the teacher. Over at Lincoln's side, on the Saratoga side, we are also in collaboration with the parent. That's part of that. They're based on, on the Lincoln side, based on transcript evaluation, their graduation plan, the number of credits that they need to meet the graduation requirements. On our, our side, our high schoolers, we do have ninth and 10th graders, that would be the same for them. But our K-8 students, we're looking at, they're based on their grade level and their education plan. Lincoln Hill High School is also working on High School Beyond Plan, and all of the learning plans have a final approval by the certified teacher.
I can do this, yeah? Thanks. You're going to be proud of me. The, the weekly check-ins, really, they want to be face-to-face, they can be yoga meets, but the state really requires that, that weekly check-in. The, at Saratoga, the onsite enrichment and those core classes are there once a week. Many of you have probably been to the school, Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, or Fridays, when students are there, and they enjoy being on campus. The monthly progress review, did you want to do that?
Sure. You did a good job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
The monthly progress review, as we talked about before, learning progress reviewed monthly by the certified teacher, and that's based on the students' individual goal areas in, in each of the academic subjects. The schedules can be accelerated, maintained, or modified to promote success. So we have students working above grade level, we have students working at grade level, we have students still working to catch up and fill some holes that they might have had previously. And, sorry, students access state and local assessments, of course.
Okay. The, the big thing that I learned my first week on the job from Monica and, and Chair Steen in the Alpha Sunberg at, at Lincoln is compliance, you have to make sure. So a review of things and, and planning and process is not just terminology, we use it, the Church Creek Campus, it's required by the state of Washington. And so the annual school improvement planning process is, is a big deal, and the state requires that you have that, and, and that you review it. Obviously, OSPI and WALLA, the State Association, are constantly looking at things. We have a good relationship there, we attend the regional conference, we sent some people to the state conference this year. It's constant feedback from parents, and we get it daily. We get a lot of parents at Saratoga, when they drop off and pick up, and they come in for meetings with their teacher, and then at Lincoln, we're constantly in touch with parents, and so we get a lot of feedback from the public about our program. Thank you. Yeah, it is, there's the, this is the state chess tournament, Mr. Baugh, one of our teachers, I think, who was chairman at Stonewall High School, is the advisor, and so we held this at, at Church Creek Campus in the main gym, and had everybody from around the state at the state chess tournament, it's a pretty cool picture, Evan Caldwell took, so thank you for that. Any questions?
Several. One. You mentioned that Lincoln was remote learning?
There's a part.
Yep, for alternative, for the ALE portion of it, yep, and we've got, you know, in-person classes too, and so the ALE portion that we're funded for is just the remote piece.
And Saratoga is basically homeschooling, one day a week or one time a week on, on the campus and the rest of, so, and, and so the Lincoln version of that, are they, what are they doing compared to Saratoga?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Saratoga does have kindergarten through 10th grade, and so our K-8 program, you're right, it does look a lot like homeschooling, but as I mentioned, one of the biggest differences is that we are a public school, and so there are rules and regulations that we have to adhere to with public, public funds and, and all of that. So it's not traditional homeschooling that, that families do, but we are fortunate to partner with a lot of families who have chosen to homeschool and, and have chosen that route, and sometimes they'll partner with us for all of their child's education, and sometimes for portions of it, so.
Do you have any data on what they do after they age out of the Saratoga program particularly?
Yeah, that's a good question, too. We have, going into 11th and 12th grade, many of our students will enroll at Stonewall High School and go straight to Running Start, and so continue their education through, through college. Some will, many students kind of do a mix of kind of shared enrollment in their ninth and 10th grade, just to kind of get their, their feet at Stonewall High School and try it out and do some. The biggest thing is that these students have learned that there's some options for, for learning. And so, so we have students who share enrollment and then go into Stonewall High School, or they finish at Lincoln, traditional Lincoln five-day program, or they might finish with the Lincoln Remote Program if they enjoyed the online and network for them.
On that Running Start?
Yeah.
Does that have limited eligibility and cost more, or?
The Running Start program?
Yeah, can anybody do that, or is there a certain amount that?
That's a really good question for somebody who knows Running Start, that is not part of our program, but I, I did watch some, some videos about it, because I'm a high schooler. But yeah, I, I think you have to have a certain number of credits to be eligible, and then...
That's right, you have a certain number of credits, GPA, achievement that has to be met, and the, the cost is converted through the enrollment process at, at the high school.
But as many students that want to do it can do it?
Yes.
Oh, that's good. That's good. There's no limit.
That, that are eligible to do it.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Do they all go to Cambridge, or some go to Skent?
Yeah, both.
Well, I don't have a question, but I know you have great facilities out there, but better than that, you have a great program there. And I'd like to thank you and all of your staff for the wonderful job you're doing. And just special thanks to Todd for your many years of service.
Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership.
We were just getting them trained up, my man.
Yeah, right. Thanks for your leadership to both you and for the staff who are here and not here tonight for, for their work, and also thankful for the community's continued commitment to providing options for all students in our district to access the school that works best for them. So thanks once again. That's the end of the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Anyone in attendance may speak to the items contained in the consent agenda, and only those items contained in the consent agenda at this time. This is not a portion of the open public comment on items outside of the consent agenda that is coming up soon. Are there any board directors who wish to pull any item from the consent agenda through discussion? Are there any people in attendance that would like to speak to any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, so you know, is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 11? So moved by Director King.
Second.
Seconded by Director Foster. All those in favor of Consent Agendas Items 1 through 11, say aye.
Aye.
And you have noticed, no? And that passes unanimously. We have no holdups to discuss, we are up to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the board are asked to submit online requests using the public comment link in our website or by email two hours prior to the board meeting start time. For those attending the meeting in person, request forms were available in the boardroom for submission prior to the meeting start time. Citizens who wish to provide documents to the board directors will hand them to the recording secretary for distribution after the meeting, and the board president will call upon individuals who have requested to speak during the comment section of the agenda. Individuals will save their name for the record, and will be allowed three minutes. We have two requests for public comments tonight. If you respect hold on our speakers, please refrain from responding to the comments of the speakers as a matter of order, because this is the board's business meeting. The board is providing an opportunity for the public to comment. However, the board does not create discussions on those comments within the meeting, as they are not part of the agenda. Comments will be followed up on. After the meeting, if that is appropriate, when it's your turn, please save your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak, there's a timer on the screen there. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time to address the board is up. So our first speaker is Pat Shaughnessy.
I'm Pat Shaughnessy from Comeno Island. Last time I spoke in front of this board, I mentioned my 21 grans who still live in this school district. Most of those will never attend our Stonewall Schools again. What I neglected to mention was a huge shout-out to Dr. Colin Ryan, who has taught my friends and myself many things about this district. We've been meeting with Colin for, once a month, for about two years, and very much appreciate all the time he has spent with us and all the things that we have learned. And thank you to the rest of the administration who helped to make this happen. So Colin, thank you for all your time that you've spent with us. While we've learned so much from Colin, we've also learned a lot from attending these board meetings. Amazing how much a person can learn by simply sitting quietly and listening. A perfect example, at a board meeting held not very long ago, I listened to our directors speak very highly of Mr. Ryan Ovenell and his abilities to lead this district. A unanimous consensus, yes, that means all five, agreed that Mr. Ovenell's title should be changed to Superintendent, and that in addition to the current contract that expires in June of 2025, Mr. Ovenell would be offered a contract for our next full school year as well. There was even discussion that this item should be listed on the consent agreement section of the next board meeting, so it could be officially voted on. I didn't learn any, anything about that in the last board meeting. There was not any discussion about it, and it was not on tonight's agenda. So my question is, what happened between the February 18 meeting and last meeting on March 4? This whole thing sort of smells, and it feels really icky. So I'll ask again, what happened? I'm pretty sure I can make a good guess, or perhaps I could make a bunch of false accusations, release a series of misinformation, smear someone's good name, or get in someone's face. That's not my style, and that's not how I roll. So I'll just sit here patiently and hope that soon someone can give me answers that I'm looking for, because I'm not about to give up on our kids. Are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next commenter is Stuart Hunt.
My name is Stuart Hunt, I'm here because of a confrontation of ethics and truth. I have a specific concern, and I could have emailed the board, which I did three times in February, and received but one thank you. So here I am. I recognize an honor not focusing on a specific member of the school board, but you will see why I must. In the Everett Herald front page story of February 22nd, a board member dragged me into the story and said that I attended two meetings of Republican women, but did not specify if they were city, county, or state meetings, or when. Since that didn't happen ever, I contacted the Comeno Island Republican Women, their attendants, she do not list me, they have never seen me at a meeting, which would have been obvious, since I would have been the only male in the women's group. As a political agnostic, I have never attended nor joined a political party. In the article, the board member in print made it sound like an accusation belonging to a political party, apparently a specific party. Curiously, political parties are not even mentioned in the United States Constitution. I then must ask, what was the purpose of this lie, and where did you get the idea? What happened to trust that verify? Did you ask, or did you just make it up? Was it your intent to harm me? Why drag me into your personal drama? The same applies to the reporter Jordan Hanson, he trusted this lie but did not verify, then put it in print. Just to be clear, I don't care about the contrived accusation, I cared that you lied in print. Now the problem shifts to the community. Since you told Whopper, going forward, how can the public believe anything you claim or say? Once a lie is told, going forward, we have no idea if what follows is truth or fiction. Everything will be questioned. That is not a good position for an elected public official. To use your phrase, this is really icky. It then appears, Director Evans, since you have created both mistrust and distrust, you have two options. One, you can recant and apologize in public and both the Stonewall Comeno News and the Everett Herald, or two, you can resign your position, one or both. Finally, can we then expect the Stonewall Comeno News to give this story the same importance as they have other stories about the school board? That would be professional.
Speakers, thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts with us today. We'll now move on to topics scheduled for school board discussion. We have one topic in this room, the legislative session update, and I will call on our legislative representative to lead that on.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say it's an honor to be the legislative rep, I've enjoyed every minute. There are, this is my first report this year, there are WASSO's three big priorities for funding. Number one is funding for special education. Number two is transportation for students, looks like we're getting a new bus, so that's good, topical. And thirdly, for ENSOC, which is Materials for Operating Expenses. So I've been advocating and calling and testifying, excuse me, and promoting the idea that they fund those for us. In other news, I'd like to make a statement regarding House Bill 1296 and Senate Bill 5181. Initiative 2081, commonly called the Parents' Bill of Rights, was adopted as written by the legislature in '24, and laid out 15 rights for parents and guardians of public school students. The state court ruled that I-2081 was constitutional as written. At the time, Democrats raised concerns about the law's broad language and its potential to limit health care for LGBTQ and youth. They vowed to take future action if necessary. In '25, Democrats dropped House Bill 1296, and on Thursday, March 13th, it moved out of the House. The bill will undo several provisions of the Parents' Bill of Rights, which was passed last year. Bill 5181 is similar to the House bill. I urge members of the community to study these issues carefully, and notify your state senator and your representatives and school board, I'll let, oh, sorry, of how you want them to vote as the legislative session moves forward. We're past the midway point, and it is over 4:27, that'll be the end of it. My role as director of the Stonewall Comeno School District is to encourage you to stay abreast of discussion, stay abreast of discussion for many reasons, but it gets a little more complicated at this point. If, if Washington state law is not compatible with recent mandate, the recent mandate issued by the new Secretary of Education, Linda McMahon, federal funding of schools in Washington State may be at risk, and one way or another, we have to find a way for that lost revenue. And that usually means additional taxes. Consider these things carefully, that's all I have to say on the issue.
That's your Director, Director King also attended a legislative meeting, did you want to add any comments?
Yeah, well, that was, I mentioned it last quarter.
Okay. Any other comments on the legislative session that's currently going on?
I did have some questions upon, mainly the ones about funding. Obviously, we had a budget meeting earlier, was there any like forward progress or any momentum in a lot of the, the funding mechanisms that we were looking for, or have they, I know that, who's indicated that they haven't proposed like a specific budget yet, but didn't talk on that?
It is 4:27, and I did my homework, so you should do your homework.
Oh.
I don't know, it's not over.
I attended too, and at the time, at the time of the conference, there, there had been no action in the legislature at all, nothing was out committing, et cetera. I think there's been two steps since then, I mean, what gets out of committee and what dies, but I don't know the details of the aftermath of that conference, but there were some bills, we're going to increase our expenses without any extra evidence, let's hope they don't pass in.
I think that's kind of what I was asking for, so I know there's a couple like Senate bills, like 5263, talks about special, special education and stuff like that, are those, like, any of those, those all, like, all ready but kicked out, any of the ones that we were looking for, that WASSO was specifically advocating for? I mean, I, thank you for my information, I also read my advocacy when I was asking if you had any additional insight, thank you.
Right, the three priorities, should I mention, tell you again, what WASSO is promoting?
No, I'm asking you if there was any movement or any of the ones that we were specifically advocating for that had funding mechanisms built into them, have moved forward, or we've specifically already ruled them out?
I looked for that kind of thing, in the articles I read, but they weren't, not, that I read was not comprehensive. It was like certain things, and I didn't recognize any special ones, or the ones I saw mentioned that had, had dropped out, and that's what counts, is the, which ones get made out of committee, et cetera, but I don't know.
And we should know more, and also there were 500, well over 500 bills, so it's very comprehensive, and it really requires a lot of study and homework.
And it was a long session, it sure is a long session, yeah. So, all right, moving on to student representative reports, I'm just going to go first. Go first.
On Thursday, the 13th, our most recent ASB meeting-
our most recent ASB meeting took place in which we discussed upcoming events such as our quarterly pancake breakfast, serving our students in the morning during advisory. Along with this, we also started planning for our spring social, opening to all of our students on Friday, April 25th, as well as a spirit week of. Students are looking forward to a short schedule beginning of April as conferences are April 2nd to 4th and during that time, we'll have a half-day schedule for those days. Shortly after that, a spring break from 7 to 11. After April, students will be focusing on their requirements for being on path to graduate, getting in their assignments, working on their high school beyond plan, taking spring SBA testing beginning Monday, May 12th, if they're not already done, and doing creative retrieval if they need to. And that's pretty much all there is to say.
Thank you, Luke. As for Stanford, our ASB class is busy with facilitating and managing a variety of activities for our students, families, and community members. These activities will allow our students to thrive and flourish as we look towards the conclusion of our school year and beyond. Many teachers have been utilizing hands-on creative activities as a means to engage the students. A class that really exemplifies this is Mr. Ingram's physics class and their vehicle competition that they've been doing. Ingram students have been creating cars that begin from rest, brake, and stop before hitting a wall, all while not breaking the egg that protrudes from the front vehicle. This project challenges students to use design principles with purpose and to understand how laws of physics apply to the world around them. Meanwhile, in our ASB class, we are as busy as ever. Executive Board elections are coming up at the end of this month where students will elect their 2025 to 2026 school year officers, including our president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and public relations officer. Next month, students will elect their class officers, including their class presidents, vice presidents, secretaries, and treasurers. Simultaneously, we are preparing to hold a middle school camp at our campus for students in leadership classes at Port Susan and Stanwood Middle Schools to learn on the leadership program at SHS. Other upcoming events we are looking forward to include Thriftwood, our annual talent show, and our Twolo Dance this May. Our school has been at the forefront of many, many successful activities which you've probably heard about over the last few weeks. This last Saturday was our last performance of our musical, The Addams Family. This musical, performed and put together by students at SHS, was widely praised for its comedy, music, and acting. Last Thursday, one of our high Q teams advanced to finals where they will compete in this Thursday for a shot to compete against teams at the national level. Regarding sports, spring sports are beginning to kick, run, and swing off. Yesterday, girls tennis took on Arlington and emerged with a strong seven-to-zero victory. Last Friday, boys soccer won six-to-five against Arlington. And today, earlier today, actually, our girls golf is taking on Arlington. Boys soccer is facing Everett and girls tennis is going against Brook Harbor. This Thursday, Spartan Track and Field is hosting their annual jamboree in the wood at home. And this Friday, boys soccer is facing off against Limwood at home. And I would like to thank everyone in this community for their continued support of our students and our activities. Thank you.
Thank you, student representatives. Well, now we move on to items brought up by board directors. Director Evans, do you have anything to report on the sessions?
I don't. Just another busy season for everybody, wrapping up one sport that leads into the others. Congratulations to all of our sports teams that made it to state this year and are supporting. I love seeing bands and cheer go down and support our girls basketball team. Again, that whole coats piece where everybody sort of supports each other and that's really great to see. Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you, Director Evans. Director Murray?
I as well would like to thank all of the, or congratulate all of the teams that made it to state. But also, I wanted to touch on, we had our academic committee meeting, which was very good. And we talked about how data is analyzed and perceived and got some really great feedback on how we can improve our data points that are being published on our website so that they're more understandable to the general public. And also... ...the high school. So, it was a great meeting on our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Murray. Director Wasty?
Well, I went to that WASTA and it was very fun. We card pulled, so we saved some money and it was enlightening. The other thing, I just had a quick question, is I see this envelope. Is this from the student representatives? Because this came in our email.
No, that was...
This is something we've ordered in emails.
Somebody else said.
Oh, okay. Anyway, thank you for all coming. I think parents' rights are important, so I hope you guys will think of how you feel about it since we represent the community.
Thank you, Director Wasty. Director King?
Yeah, I attended the seat that meeting and looking especially at the residential housing projects that are happening, especially in our northeast or at the Anticropes and High School. Many, many hundreds of new housing units. And we talked about potential for letting and that's been a special interest of mine because I see what's going on up around the both sides of conversation, et cetera. Also, attended the academic committee and that's a special interest too. And that was a special to the sound there. Good things are happening and so I'm looking forward to good things coming out of that. Improving not just our core academics, but broad spectrum, including multiple paths to graduation.
Thank you, Director King. I had the privilege of watching the last performance of The Addams Family, the high school musical in the high school back there, which was packed out. And I understand it's packed out most of the evenings there. They did an excellent job. And the teacher, David Sims, who has been their director of the plays for the last 30 years, I guess, and Eric Ronnie, the music director, did an excellent job and they kind of started together. They've been doing it for 30 years. This was the last year for Director Sims in directing the plays. He will continue teaching, but he's retiring from play directing. Also, the Director Area One Regional Meeting, which was the first of 12 that WASTA puts on around the state, was very good in Birmingham. I wish you'd all could have been there. But the purpose or the theme of the whole thing was called Leading with Purpose and that's what we discussed there. And one of the questions that we were asked to discuss and that was asking myself, my colleagues in every discussion, how does this impact student success? And everything we do in this board is focused towards the student and that's the question that we should be asking on everything we do. And I'll give the last word to Superintendent Obernath, who attended the Friday night performance.
Thank you. As Director Evans said, there's just a lot happening in our district right now, both with athletics and activities and in the classroom. So, it's an exciting time as we move into spring. I just want to say congratulations once again to our shining stars, although those are the students who were selected by staff. There's many, many shining stars in each of the schools and it is the best part of my day to be able to visit the schools, every school, every week, to see how staff are impacting the lives of the students and moving forward. So, thank you.
All right. That work will now move into an executive session to review the performance of a district employee until 7:45 and we will reconvene at that time in the term. So, we are moving to the executive session. Thank you all.
We just took a few off.
Okay, it's all good.
Okay. Right in time, 7:44.
All right, we're live.
Okay, the board has concluded the executive session and we are now adjourned.
Okay.